We are waiting for two members. I'm going to start with my little explanation. Good evening.
Yep, you're in the right place.
The City of Peabody zoning board of appeals meets tonight in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 40A and other applicable laws. Tonight's hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The secretary will read the legal notice or state that such notice has been waived. All applications will be heard in the order they were received in the city clerk's office or as otherwise designated by the chair tonight. They will be heard in order. The petitioner or petitioners representative will present the subject application to the board. And at this point, I'm going to stop reading and explain this to you in everyday language. So, what happens is this. When it's your number, one, two, three, or four, the secretary will read what your petition is all about. Then you'll come up to the podium and you'll state your name and address for the record. And then you'll tell us why you're here, in the best explanation you can. If you are not the one presenting and you have a contractor or an attorney, then they would come up and speak for you. At that time, the board can ask you some questions. I then look at the audience, which apparently is just to my left tonight, and I ask if there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak in favor. And they come up, they state their name and address for the record, and they tell us why they have no problem with you building whatever you want to build. I then say, is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak in opposition? There are nights when we're full over here and we're full over here and we have quite a few people that want to speak in opposition. Unfortunately, that seems to be the biggest area where we have people that would like to speak. Once again, you come up to the podium, one by one, you state your name and address for the record, and you tell us why you are in opposition. I don't think it's going to be this way tonight, but in case you ever have to come back, if we have six or seven or eight people or more that want to speak in opposition, usually after the fourth or fifth or sixth person, it's repetitive. So, you come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You don't have to repeat what's already been said. You could just say, "I agree with my neighbors that have come before me." After everybody has spoken in opposition, you, the petitioner, or your attorney, or your contractor can come back up to the podium and review, you know, talk about, if they want to, some of the concerns that your neighbors had. At that point, we might ask a few more questions. We take a vote, and the decision is then typed and filed with the city clerk. Once the decision is filed with the city clerk, the 20-day appeal period begins. So, whether you're -- say you're approved. Let's hope you're approved. You have 20 days to wait. That's an appeal period. You can't come back to City Hall on the 20th day. It's a full 20 days. You come back to City Hall on the 21st day, and then Carla will tell you your next steps. In compliance with the open meeting law, this hearing is on TV, Channel 9, and it's also being recorded stenographically by our clerk. When you come to the podium, please speak clearly and directly into the microphone. And now we're going to get into some of the little rules and regulations. When you come up and speak in opposition, because usually when this is when this happens, people like to go into great detail about their neighbor in a negative way. So, we don't care about that. We don't care about how many kids they have, how many dogs they have, whether the dog is large, small, barks, doesn't bark, whether they have trees that have leaves that fall into your pool. We don't care. We're here for dimensional relief. And if it's too close to your property line and their deck is going to overlook your bedroom, it's a concern. But what you do for a living and what you have for lunch and whatever else you want to say negatively about your neighbors, please save it, because you'll get one of these and I'll stop you. We're here for dimensional relief. We keep close to that, as close as we can, to that, those rules. I don't mean to be judgmental and I'm not going to cut you off if you want to tell me how long you've lived in Peabody and you have a little story, but really try to stick to clear and concise reasons. After you speak and you go back to your seat and you remembered you had something else to say, you have to come back to the podium. It never fails, every month we get somebody shouting. I don't think it's going to happen tonight, because we don't have that many people, but they shout something else from their seat. No, we don't like that either. Cell phones. We had an incident last month where somebody decided to take their cellphone and video part of this. So, we have Channel 9, we are on tape, the minutes are public. After they are typed, you can come and you can get those minutes. I have consulted with the city attorney. It is against the law without my permission or anybody on the board's permission to videotape us on anything that you have personally. So, today and forever, that's not allowed. What else? For anybody that has -- the attorneys mostly in the audience, it happens almost every New information, new plot plans, new renderings are finished the morning of the meeting and they're passed out to us tonight. So, that's really not in the rules. The rules really state that anything new has to be passed in to the clerk, and she has to make copies and she has to timestamp it, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'm stating tonight and from this point on, if there is a contractor or attorney or anybody else, a petitioner, that has something brand-new that they want to show and pass out to the board on the evening that you are being heard, it won't be accepted. It has to be passed in to the clerk in a timely fashion so the board can look at it and review it before, two minutes before you're ready to speak. And Stephen is not here, but I believe we can still go ahead with four. So, that's about it for tonight, and I hope I made everything nice and clear. And we are now ready to begin with number one, which is a continued application of Joseph Capanito. Now, I'm just, something that's continued, we don't read the whole petition again, just so you know.
My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street here in Peabody, Massachusetts, and I appear this evening on behalf of Joseph Capanito of 13 Madison Ave. in Peabody, Massachusetts. Do we think we're going to have our fifth member?
We can be heard with four.
I understand that.
Stephen was here for last month. Is Stephen a lotus? Stephen's a lotus.
This is great. It's hard to watch.
number two, you would need four unanimous, you would need the whole board to say yes to your petition. If you think you have something shaky and you're a little unsure of...
I was a lotus. I was a lotus meeting, so I can't vote.
You can't one...
If this was continued, I can't vote. From last meeting, because I wasn't at last meeting.
Right. He didn't participate.
That's why we're waiting for Stephen.
When Stephen gets here, there'll be four.
When Stephen gets here, there'll be four. One, two, three, four.
I get it. I'm just saying that if he doesn't show...
If he doesn't show...
We have four. We can't vote.
Right. So, you understand that. If Stephen's a lotus does not show up, we can't vote for number one.
Because Kevin was not here.
Okay. Everybody else, you think about it for a minute. You do have four right here sitting in front of you. You need to have all of us vote yes. If you feel unsure of that, you do have the option to continue it until next month. I'm not trying to scare you at all. I'm just telling you that that is an option that you can have. And we'll give you a minute. And it also gives Stephen an extra minute to get here.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 15, 7:00 p.m., Wigan Auditorium, City Hall 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Gianna Alamanti, 3 Jennings Circle, Peabody, for variance from the provisions of the zoning ordinance 2011, as amended Section 715A and Section 72, as they apply to the premises known as 3 Jennings Circle, map 44, Lot 118, Peabody. This petitioner seeks a variance to allow for a structure in the front yard where no structure is allowed and relief from the front yard setback where 25 feet are required. 10 feet are proposed. The property is located in an R1 zoning district. The application and plot plan are available for review at the City Clerk and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall, and will be available at the time of public hearing.
Hi, I'm Gina Alamanti. I live at 3 Jennings Circle. I'm the homeowner. So, I'm here today because when I bought the house two and a half years ago, there was an in-ground pool in the, technically it was the front yard, but it's fully fenced in. And the pool failed, so we want to put a new pool in the same location, want to go with an in-ground pool, and found out that for the permit, I'd have to, you know, the zoning laws are that the pool has to be behind the front facade of the house, so I had to go for this variance, and that's why I'm here today.
Through the chair. Just taking a look at your application and submitted with the application was a survey, a plot plan from the Eastern Land Survey, Chris Mello. And it says that the existing 18-foot-by-33-foot above-ground pool is to be removed, but I think I heard you say it was an existing in-ground pool. Can you clarify?
No, it was an existing above-ground pool.
It was an above-ground pool?
Yes.
Okay, great. So it's...
I'm going to put an in-ground.
And the in-ground pool that's proposed is essentially in the same footprint?
Yes.
It's going to be a few feet larger than the current footprint for the above-ground?
Same width?
Same width and three feet?
Maybe a few feet longer, yes.
Longer towards the front of the yard?
It doesn't have to go towards the front. It can definitely go towards the back, but just using the same footprint as the old one, just, I can go further back.
Okay. Do you know, as it's drawn and on the plan, is that...
He didn't write the measurement right there from the very front of where he drew the pool, or I guess it's 10 feet, actually.
Well, it is 10 feet, so I guess my question would be, is it 10 feet currently or is it 13 feet or is it 7 feet? You know, which way are we going?
It's currently, there's a fence there, too, and I just know that where that front end of the pool was to the fence is 6 feet.
It's 6 feet?
And then the ground in front of it slopes down. It's a hill, like the whole yard is raised.
Okay.
The house and the front yard are lower, and there's a set of stairs on each side of the house to go up to the yard. The yard is a story higher than the front of the house. So, that area where it says 10 feet, probably about half of that, or five or six, I don't know the exact, I don't know the exact measurement, goes to the fence, then it slopes, then it's a, it slopes down. It grades down. There's no wall there. It grades down to the street more.
What's happening with the fence? Is it going to be...
I was going to do a new fence, a higher fence, too. It's like a four-foot fence now and do a six-foot fence.
Okay. And is that fence going to be a privacy fence or is it going to be, will you be able to see through?
No. It would be a privacy fence, like one of the kind that you see everywhere.
Sure.
The Veranda ones.
Okay. All right, thank you.
How long has the above-ground pool been there?
In the file, it said 1994. They had a special permit for it in 1994 to build it. So, it's two owners ago.
Oh.
Through the chair. Two things. One's procedural, one is not. The documentation is different than that I've seen before. Have we got a new form?
Oh, yes.
Nope, did not know that, because I wasn't here last time.
Last, last time, Mr. McHugh, we have a new application form. Do you like it better?
I'm not going to, I'm not going to say I do or not.
But yes, it is brand-new and this, from this point on, moving forward, this is what will be used.
Okay, thank you. And the second part is, I just want to make sure I heard this correctly. The pool that's here right now, is it an in-ground pool?
No.
No, it's an above-ground pool.
Yeah, it's been taken down, but the pool mound is still there.
Okay. I thought I heard that differently. I thought it was replacing what was already there or renovating or what happened. Okay.
And the reason that you're not putting it...
Yep, anywhere else.
Anywhere else.
Okay. The very back of the yard, where you see like how it's a small, like jutting, that pretty much, that whole thing is a very steep hill with a lot of trees. On my neighbor, Aunt Como, it's all trees over there. And then in my yard, in the back of my house, like directly, like where you see the deck, straight across from it, and then over maybe like 12 feet to the right of that are two large trees. And then, yeah, that's the trees, basically, is why.
Through the chair. This is also a corner lot, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's Jennings Circle. It's on the corner of Jennings and, what's the street?
Actually Jennings, it's on the corner of Jennings and Jennings. It starts and goes straight a little bit, and then it becomes the circle.
Like a circle?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Some of the street part on the corner.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody to speak in favor? Anybody to speak in opposition?
He had a question.
Excuse me?
My neighbor.
It's probably more for Gina.
It is. You can't talk from your seat.
I did. Sorry about that.
Address for the record, please.
Chris Gallagher, 36 Jennings Circle. I would say I'm really here for more fact gathering, so just to make sure I understand what is being requested. The only thing that is, I guess, a violation of zoning is just the fact the pool's extending out close to the road than what's allowed?
Well, front yard.
Yeah.
There's no accessory structure allowed. There's no accessory structure allowed in a front yard.
Okay. And the pool is considered a structure at this, okay?
Yep. And the setback.
And setback. So, the pool, as it's drawn up here, has to be 10 feet off the road, right? So, that would put the fence somewhere short of 10 feet?
The, there's supposed to be 25 feet from the, from the street to where you would have a structure.
Right.
There's only going to be 10. So, there's a variance required for the 10 feet. There's also a variance required for the structure being in the front yard as opposed to a side or backyard. So, there's two variances essentially being requested by this application. It's the front yard structure and it's the 10-foot setback as opposed to the 25 that's required.
Okay. And did the 10 feet represent where the pool was going to be or the fence was going to be? I was just trying to look at this drawing and I think I got confused.
I think it's sort of where the pool is by the drawing.
Okay.
There's, the way the drawing has been submitted by Chris Mello, there's 10 feet from the street to where the pool starts. So, there'll be 10 feet of yard in between the fence and the, in the, in the pool. But if it's, I mean, you shouldn't be able to see it if there's going to be a six-foot fence in front of it.
No, no, I just meant in regards to, from the street, the first thing it's going to hit is the fence, which will be short of 10 feet.
There'll be a fence along the perimeter of the yard, which I believe there is now, but it's going to be a new fence. They're going to replace an existing fence with a new fence that goes from, it's four feet currently. The fence will be on the property line.
Okay.
It's going to be, it's not going to be on the sidewalk.
No, I was just getting confused on how far the, where the fence lives now.
I don't have that much.
Yeah, that's where I was just getting confused. I mean, in principle, I don't really have an issue. I was just trying to work through the dynamics of where this is, because it makes more sense when I'm looking at it than on the piece of paper.
So, in reality, Ms. Alamanti, your in-ground pool is going to be in the same area as the above-ground pool?
Correct.
Or essentially it'll extend out to where the fence is now?
So, I think I understand the question here.
Thanks.
Right? It's all about fences, not about what's inside the fence, but what are you going to have for a fence, because that's not part of this whole thing. So, I'm assuming there's a fence there already. Is there?
There is a fence there now, yeah.
Are we replacing the fence?
Yes.
This is, this is more to the applicant.
Yes, yes, putting a new fence.
At the same location as the...
Yes, same location.
Same location, surrounding the pool. Try to work with your neighbor and say, what's your problem? And we'll work through it. That's what I think I want to get through.
If you have any concern about the fence in the front going closer, like closer to the street, I don't have...
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out, based off of, now that I was looking at it, I was trying to figure out from the, from the sidewalk, well, not the sidewalk, from the street curb there.
There's no sign.
It's about 10 feet, so I was trying to figure out if your pool is going to come this way and if you're going to have to...
No, if, I don't need it to come forward at all. I can go back, just the same line that it start, it is like where the mound is now. That would be a great place to put it.
Through the chair. So, I don't think the fence itself is part of the variance, but it is really good idea the two of you say what you're concerned, and I think around a pool, you have some legal requirements to make sure that kids can't jump in it.
Yeah.
Right? So, so it sounds like you guys are in agreement that, you know, you'd be good neighbors and pick a fence and a location of a fence.
Yeah, that's why I said I wasn't here necessarily in opposition.
You're not tearing down any trees to put up a fence. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
I know I was going to confuse everybody.
I also think that if we wanted to, we could condition, we could make the motion to allow the application on the condition that a fence, a six-foot privacy fence is put where the existing four-foot fence. We could do that if it made everybody feel more comfortable.
It's not a problem for me.
I think there's theories about that one being quite young. We could do that. If we have a condition that the petitioner and the person coming tonight has a conversation about facts, because I don't think that's going to be dictated at the moment. We could have a different one, although I'm thinking, I'm thinking that I would have a different saying, a six-foot fence, and then it's like a chain link, it's a block or...
I'm going to have the same fence that he has. So, that's right over there. It'll be a privacy fence, not a chain, chain link fence. I don't want people seeing. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, we discussed the fence already.
Yeah, in principle, like I said, I just was trying to get some more clarity for myself than anything.
Can I interject one more little tidbit? The most successful petitions that come before us are ones where the neighbors have gotten together and discussed and shown, and this is what I'm doing, what do you think? Please get together with your neighbors before you come here, because your neighbors should be abreast of to what's going on.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
You want a condition that the, that the existing fence be replaced with a six-foot enough, because I think a pool in the front yard would have a privacy fence in front of it. If we don't condition it, it doesn't matter. So, I think, I think the safe way would be, we don't even have to say, not the height limits.
No, well, that's, that's my problem. It's like...
We change it with those slats. Is that considered...
That's why I think it's, we're on a slippery slope of to say what kind of fence, how tall the fence is, you know, whether it's slats or plastic or, it has to be wood.
I don't think privacy would be, like, if you can see through anything.
I can see through any six-foot fence, because I'm 6'4". I can see right over there. But any bit, I will, I think the process is that I would have to reconsider my motion? Is that the process?
No.
We only, we don't have no motion. We added the order to allow. So, I, if I would make a motion to allow, I think it would be...
Okay. Dan, it's all up to you, buddy.
I will move to allow the variance on the condition that a privacy fence be placed in, in replace, that a privacy fence be placed where the existing fence is now.
Roll call vote.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 15, 7:00 p.m., Wigan Auditorium, City Hall 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Paul Silva, 23 Paul Ave., Peabody, for variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2017, as amended Section 72, as it applies to the premises known as 23 Paul Ave., map 59, Lot 95, Peabody. Petitioner seeks a variance for proposed addition and requires relief from the following front yard depth where 25 feet are required and 21 and a half feet are proposed. This property is located in an R1B zoning district. The application and plot plan are available for review at the City Clerk and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall, and will be available at the time of public hearing.
Good evening. My name is Paul Silva. I live at 23 Paul Ave. I'm here looking for a relief of 3 and 1/2 feet off the front of the house for a proposed addition for, in addition to be 28 by 8 to expand the living room and add on a mudroom.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody to speak in opposition? Hearing none, the matter's before the board.
Motion to close?
Second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Four, David and Jacqueline Silvy.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 15, 7:00 p.m., Wigan Auditorium, City Hall 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of David and Jacqueline Silvy, 47 Blaney Ave., Peabody, for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2011, as amended Section 72, as it applies to the premises known as 47 Blaney Ave., map 103, lots 81, 82. Petitioner seeks to subdivide the parcel of land and requires a variance for the following for Lot A. Lot area where 20,000 square feet are required and 7,007 plus or minus square feet are proposed. Lot frontage where 125 feet are required and 67.2 feet are proposed. Lot width where 93.75 feet are required and 67.2 feet... Lot width where 93.75 feet are required and 67.2 feet are proposed. Side yard where 20 feet are required and 11 plus or minus feet are proposed. Minimum buildable lot width where 60 feet are required and 47 plus or minus feet are proposed. Lot B. Lot area where 20,000 square feet are required and 88, 55 plus or minus square feet are proposed. Lot frontage where 125 feet are required, 82.8 feet are proposed. Lot width where 93.75 feet are required and 82.8 feet are proposed. Side yard where 20 feet are required and 15 plus or minus feet are proposed. Minimum buildable lot width where 60 feet are required and 42 plus or minus feet are proposed. The property is located in R1 zoning district. This application and plot plan are available for review at the City Clerk and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall, and will be available at the time of public hearing.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in Peabody, Massachusetts, and I appear this evening on behalf of David P. Sylvie and Jacqueline Sylvie. Jacqueline is here this evening. Jacqueline resides on Blaney Avenue in Peabody, Massachusetts, and I'm pleased to say that we've had the opportunity to vet these plans and speak with our neighbors concerning these plans, and we have gained the support of those neighbors. Two have signed letters, Michael O'Hara, who is at property owner at 28 Blaney Avenue, and our other neighbor is adjacent to that at 45 Blaney Ave. We've also, our immediate neighbor is Grace, your former clerk to the board, and she is not in opposition whatsoever to this matter that's before you this evening. The property comes out of the old Thomas Appleton Plan, which is a 1928 plan. There is a jointer of two lots. They have merged for purposes of zoning over a period of years. Originally, back in 1928, these lots did conform to zoning. Since zoning has changed over the years, there are now, there is now, in order to develop the second lot where the shed was, there's a need to divide the property, seek variance from this board. If you were to grant the variances that are before you this evening, which do have the support of our neighbors, we are suggesting to you that we will, this will result in two lots that have, both of which will have more frontage than the majority of the lots on the street, and they will be of an area larger than the, the majority of the lots on the street. There is a need to bring this matter before the Conservation Commission. As shown on the plan, there is a pipe to the rear of the lot on the left, and we are happy to bring that matter before. We, we have had, we will hire the services of Bill Manuel. He will outline where the wetland area is, and we're happy to appear before the Conservation Commission if we're fortunate enough to get the vote of this board this evening. We are proposing the construction of a 50 by 30 single-family dwelling, which, once again, that proposed dwelling would be in conformity with the neighborhood, and my client is here this evening and happy to answer any questions. We are in concert happy to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Through the chair? Attorney Kelty, do you know if, if the existing structure has been granted a fala for a family-accessible living area?
I know of the existing structure on Lot B.
Lot A.
Lot A, that's constructed and that's built, that's finished.
Just, I'm just kind of curious, or if, if I could, you say the, the petitioner is here, through the chair to the petitioner, do you have a fala for, associated with the existing building? You do? All right, so it, it was a fala you obtained through then the City Council or?
The Building Inspector? The Building Commissioner.
Okay, okay, thank you. Tell you, I'll tell you my concern here is, we did, we did get a letter, and one of the things mentioned in the letter was the number of cars and vehicles, one including a motorcycle, that it, that currently utilize the property now. And I can see that you have quite a large driveway that could probably accommodate those vehicles, but with the subdivision of this land, a good portion of that driveway will be removed.
Sylvie, 47 Blaney Ave., Peabody, Massachusetts. So the fala that we have now, it's, I live downstairs and my, my brother lives upstairs, and we remodeled that house and remodeled part of, you know, fixed up the land a bit. We brought the property and our intention is for us to build on the second property for both of us. I mean, we won't be sharing the land anymore, but we will still maintain same number of vehicles, pretty much, and our driveway fits all of those vehicles right now. The motorcycle is there, but it's never on the street. I mean.
Excuse me, Carla, in this residential area, one commercial vehicle or two allowed? Could you look that up, please? Do you have two commercial vehicles on that property?
He's a plumber, so his, he has a van by his company, but it's just a van, so it does have commercial plates. My brother does have commercial plates on his truck as well for his company, but he's actually changing them back to, he just recently decided he's going to change them back for insurance purposes or whatever it is. But his is just a pickup truck. There's no like.
It's, it's weight that dictates what you can have in a neighborhood. So it's 2,500 pounds, if I'm not mistaken?
Alloway, do you have that? R1 zoning ordinance, allow for one commercial vehicle, not in a public way, not to exceed 12,000 pounds, to be used solely by owner of property. That's what that law states. One commercial vehicle, not in a public way, not to exceed 12,000 pounds, to be used solely by owner of property.
So if that pickup were to exceed 12,000 pounds, we would, must need remove it from the property? And that would not be a problem?
We can do that.
For a condition?
Through the chair, I'm looking at the locus, and, you know, good thing about Google Earth, I, I did it. Isn't there another street there, Eastman something or other? Eastman Park?
Yes, and it shows to the rear of us on the, so it's to the immediate left of the second dwelling, and the plan says, PBD Housing Authority, and the roadway driveway into the peasing, PBD Housing Authority is what's called Eastman Park.
Okay, it, it just doesn't show on this, so this would be a corner.
It's actually not a public way, so as such, Mr. Mello didn't put it on the plan, but the driveway is exactly adjacent to our Lot B.
Okay, it's just more around the, it's a corner lot versus, as I look at this locus, I'm thinking, oh, there's lots of land there. But there isn't, right? Adeline and Eastman Ave. like follow right along, whether it be a driveway or what have you. So it was just, and it.
Adeline, Adeline leads over.
Adeline and Eastman line up to each other.
That comes into us.
For like a simple guy like myself, it looks like it's a road that makes this a corner lot. I just not seeing that anywhere, you know? It's not on the, on the, on the big plan that there's something on the right here.
We're, we're not a corner lot with respect to Adeline. Adeline leads you from Swambskett Ave. down the back near the old Corner Park and leads you to Eastman Park.
I look at this map, John, right?
Yes.
And I see a note that this is Housing Authority. I would not know, because it says right here, there is existing sidewalk. I would look at that saying, well, there must be another house next to there. I did not realize that there is no house next to it. There is, there is a road here, color what you want, driveway, what have you. So this is a corner lot on Blaney Ave.
I, I, I believe, Kevin, in me looking at this ahead of time, there's a couple of things. I don't believe it's a corner lot, and, and that, I don't believe that's a, that's not a road, that little jet thing. What, what do you call that?
I'm just saying that, looking at this thing and I'm saying, I'm assuming there's another house or another piece of property for a lot.
Right. Oh, there isn't?
Look at the locus up above.
There isn't?
There's not even a, a, a thought that there's something above. I'm looking at, at the plan.
But it's, it's not a public way.
Don't care what you're saying, but I look at this thing and say, I believe it's going to get, it's better if, if there's actual.
I'm under the impression, and Carla, help me here, how many years does a road have to be paved before they can?
So a road can be broken into, I believe, in six years, six or seven years, but that's something that DPS handles.
So DPS?
And when you need to put sewage in, you know, for that home, they would have to break through.
And I don't think that, and it's been.
It needs to be made through DPS.
Another problem because.
Also through the chair, since a real thing lives out there, call it a driveway, what have you, or a bunch of buildings, and behind the property is PBD Housing Authority, and beyond the Housing Authority, there is what? Is that the golf course? Okay. So can PBD Housing Authority build behind this property? They own it, can they build there?
From a zoning perspective, they could probably seek to add units. From a zoning perspective, they would be unable to do that, but I do believe that the golf course is developed in close enough proximity, and the resource area that shows behind our lots, that would be a constraint. So most of the units that are owned by the Housing Authority, they don't wrap around behind us, they, they are adjacent to us, staying on the left-hand side.
So I only bring it up because we're looking for, you know, a pretty big change with a lot of different elements to it, the, the lot size, setbacks, what have you, and maybe there's people here to talk for or against it, but until I actually saw it, I did not realize that. That's all the questions I have.
Is there anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody in the audience to speak in opposition? Before you do that, come up to the podium. Do you mind if I read this?
Not at all.
We have a letter here.
Can we consider it if they're not going to be named?
Can we consider it if we don't give the name? Yes. Dear Carla, per, per telephone conversation this morning, I am stating my reservations concerning the application of 47 Blaney Ave. for a variance to subdivide the lot. The current residence has two families living it, living in it. One is considered an in-law apartment. There are six vehicles, two of them commercial, plus a motorcycle that are parked at the residence. I have safety concerns. The street is narrow here, and there are a lot of children playing in this area. I hope the Board of Appeals goes over this application carefully. It is signed, however, we are not going to read the neighbor's name into the record. So I would imagine that this is a, an opposition.
My name is Anne Paskovich, and I live at 35 Dustin Street in Peabody. And I'm here this evening just to question, because when property has been built on Blaney, which is my neighbor's, I have bought the properties, I constantly get flooded. You know, we have terrible flood problem in this whole area. So every time something's built and trees come down or whatever, my cellar is like a swimming pool. I'm sorry, my cellar is like a swimming pool, and it's up past my ankles. It's that bad all the time. So my concern was what was happening with this property going up for sale and being subdivided, and what was going in there? And am I looking at the same problem again? And those are my concerns, because there was also a problem with across the street at 20, the duplex, 28A and B. There was so much ledge there, when they started digging and blasting and whatever they could do, that caused a lot of problems for us in the neighborhood, and then they couldn't even put a cellar in because there was so much ledge. And now, I mean, you, you told me not to talk about crazy things, but I mean, it's just like a junkyard, because there's no place to put any of the toys or that, anything. Their yard is full of stuff. And as far as the vehicles, you know, it's a little bit of a concern, because there are two big vehicles that are there, and one of them is the Giovanni Tile Company, and he keeps moving the truck around. And I can see where a couple of my neighbors are concerned for their children. I don't have, personally have children, but it can be a concern. So that's what I wanted to know, what was going in there? Are they going to put two more duplexes in? Or is it going to be a single-family home or a garage or whatever? So that was my concern. Thank you for your time.
Question?
Yeah, through the chair, if I could, through, through the attorney?
Yeah, through the chair, if I could, through the attorney. Jack, do you know if there's any stormwater management going to be proposed? I mean, and if blasting is going to be required to, for this construction?
You repeat that question.
Do you, do you know offhand if, if it's going to require blasting for the, for the construction of this home? And if so, and if there's any, what, what arrangements being made for, for the stormwater?
The expectation is there would be no blasting. We do have to file with the Conservation Commission, as I've said, because we have a swale adjacent to us. We would also, at the same time, consider French drains around the premises in order to catch roof runoff, because there is in fact a, a brook adjacent to us, and we would seek approval to get our water into that brook. And I think that an appropriate condition would also be that there be no commercial vehicles located on the property that are not, that are in violation of the ordinance, zoning ordinance of the city of PBDD. So the dump truck is likely to be over the weight, and that's going to have to leave the premises.
Through the chair, doesn't it need to leave the premises now, regardless of what we do?
I would, I would agree with that, sure.
Through you, the condition would be to French drain the property or achieve permission from the Conservation Commission to utilize the swale?
We would look for two things. One would be to provide that drain around the, around the structure itself, and then also seek permission to place that water into the brook that is adjacent to us. If not, then we could put it right into the street.
You don't mind that being conditioned?
No.
No, I do not.
Okay, I, I just want to say that, you know, I don't think it's going to be very bad for the neighborhood. I mean, most of the existing homes are on probably, what, five to 7,000 square feet, maybe, at the old.
Correct, they're all smaller than this.
The old ordinance was what, 5,000?
Yes.
Then it went to 10, but this is an older neighborhood, it probably was built when the zoning was 5,000, so. And I certainly know.
Also, there was one question that was brought out. This is a single-family home, it's not duplex, it's an R1 zoning district.
And that's what my next thing, if you looked at the map, the reason the houses across the street are duplexes is because the zoning line runs right down the middle of the street, the other side of the street is R2, which, which those duplexes are permissible in an R2 district. I don't think the, I don't think the zoning ordinance of the 20,000 square feet was intended for neighborhoods, in fact, I know it wasn't, for neighborhoods such as the ones we're talking about on Blaney Avenue. I think even with the relief, I, I think they would pretty much fit in with everything else that's on that side of the street as, as being a single-family home. So as long as we can condition it, I would have no problem approving it with the conditions that we mentioned. Thank you.
Through the chair, I think you said earlier, there's four people and four votes, so do we want to go forward or do we want to roll the dice?
Yes, I understand that. I'm not, at this late hour, late date, late minute, I don't get the opportunity to get a fifth vote by coming back next month, so.
Exactly, so, so I will, so I hear my good friend Barry say, you know, what the ordinance should have been, and I'm sure there was, after long debates throughout the city, to say, R1, R2, what have you. I look at some of the comments made tonight about, you know, things that truly aren't related to the zoning, you know, the vehicles or what have you, right? That's a problem today. Building two new houses is not going to make that problem go away. And, you know, I'm a little disappointed about looking at it tonight, because, you know, we do get this electronically, but it's more in your face when you see it in the big plan, which I saw tonight, and I'm saying, that's, it would have been better for me to see the reality, what's really there. And I, and I have to thank, you know, Google Earth to say, let's double check what I think this really is, and, you know, it is, you know, a, a pretty decent amount of variance. We have one abut that showed concern, I think there was another one that wrote a concern. The person who wrote a concern was about things that aren't really around zoning, it was about the trucks and what have you. And, and I think of, you know, I always think about, if I vote for this tonight, the next person that comes across and says, well, you voted for Blaney Ave, why aren't you voting for, you know, some other Ave? It's, it's troubling, I'm going to have to think long and hard about this one.
Through the chair, Attorney Keltie, could you please just elaborate as to the hardship here that would be associated with this variance?
In my application, I've tried to address that by pointing out the existence of the 1928 Appleton Plan. Also with regard to why are we R1 zoning today, there was a line drawn back when, I want to say in the 70s, when the city was considering rezoning land, and they rezoned all of Eastman, which is immediately adjacent to this. And actually, our Eastman Park was formerly owned, if I'm not mistaken, was formerly owned by Eastman Gelatin, and the golf course and all of their land was R1. The land also up in the, off of Lynnfield Street, between Lynnfield Street and, and the Higgins High, Junior High, is also all R1. So that doesn't seem to be a real, there's an arbitrariness to parcels such as this at the end of Blaney Ave, which was an R2 zoning district. In the R2 zoning district, we would have been allowed to develop these parcels as single-family homes on 5,000 square feet, or as duplexes on 7,500. My client is now stuck, if you will, with trying to develop an R1, in an R1 zoning district. There was nobody in their chain of title that had the wherewithal to divide these properties and preserve, freeze their old zoning. So as such, we say that the arbitrariness to the application of an R1 zoning district to this particular parcel of land constitutes a hardship.
So I hear that, and I appreciate it. I think it's a good answer. I think the problem here that I'm having with this is that it's possible that it's zoned poorly and not meet, it's not meeting the requirements of a variance. I don't think that's the answer that you want to hear, but I think that it's probably a better solution to have that street rezoned correctly, because I think we're setting a difficult precedent if we allow something like this, to your point, Kevin, to go through, and something else we don't, that's border, bordering the R1 district, and it could have been R2, but it's not, it's R1. And unfortunately, in this situation, we were looking at an R1 district, and I'm having trouble finding a variance that would be in compliance with the Massachusetts general laws. So I, I'm on the fence with this one.
So I will have to say, Attorney Keltie brings up a point that I had not thought of, that the line was drawn when the property was part of that whole Eastman Gelatin business. Knowing this area, it could be seen, especially since the abut is, I don't know if it's east, west, or, behind the property is all the golf course, that, you know, that the, you know, that the intent of the zoning board was to exclude them from their across-the-street neighbors. Now, I don't want to like insert myself in the wisdom of the people who voted for these things, I don't think that's, I don't think that's my job, but I, I definitely have a different understanding of the concept, being a homeowner that, that had a zoning change myself, didn't care, because I was moving to another place in PBDD, by the way, that this was not a. I'm saying that Attorney Keltie's hardship clause, that, you know, that to take property that was adjacent to the, what was Eastman Gelatin, there was going to be 600 homes before another board bought the property and made it into a golf course, is probably, you know, a reasonable argument that, that there's a hardship, because, you know, I think that whoever made the zoning back when the golf course was made, they didn't want to have duplexes, small lots. I think the zoning at that time was more around, you know, hate to say, because there's no such thing, is West PBDD, West PBDD-sized lots for zoning.
And it's important to note that the only R1 zoning districts are in West PBDD. This is the only area which surrounds Eastman, and one side of Lincoln, Lincoln Road is, but one side of, or west of 128, let's refer to it as, but the one side of Lincoln Road, the very bottom of a couple of the streets that end at Eastman's land and the golf course, they happen to be R1, but they're the only R1 zoning districts in the downtown.
I just want to point out that I think, I mean, I, like I said, I'm on the fence, and I could, I could be swayed either way, but I think it was important for us to have this conversation on the record, because I think if we do vote for this, I think we need to be able to look at the precedent and say, well, this was a different situation because, and I think if we had just voted for it, yes or no, and we didn't actually analyze it, then we wouldn't really have set any kind of precedent. So I think that what we've done was carefully consider this application, and if nobody has anything further, I would make a motion to close.
To approve?
With the following conditions, that no commercial vehicle be allowed on either properties that are in violation of these PBDD zoning ordinance, that the owners constructing the, the new structure provide a straight, French drains around the structure to control stormwater, that the owners petition the Conservation Commission to try to gain approval to utilize the swale for the, at the wetlands, or if that fails, that the owner provide drainage to the existing street drainage system.
Could you put some sort of a timeline on those?
Being off the property. 30 days, fair? 30 days, within 30 days.
What's that do?
Commercial vehicles.
Now.
Sooner the better.
Yeah.
I'll second Barry's motion with those conditions stated.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, members of the board, thank you very much.
Do you really want me to hear it? All right. I would say that as we take applications, that, that we ask for and ensure that we have a real representative picture of what we're approving, where it is, what else is there. I, I think that the fact that it looked like there was a dead end there and this was not a corner lot was problematic for me.
You're absolutely right. Can we take that up after we do number five?
Yeah.
Okay, under, under new business? Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Go on to number five. Ms. Attorney Keltie? All right, we'll do number five. Let's go, number five.
Notices hereby given to the Board of Appeals, City of PBDD, who hold a public hearing on Monday, October 15, 7:00 PM, will go on to room City Hall, 24 Little Street, PBDD, on the application of Nate Terranzoni, 38 Proctor Circle, PBDD, Mass., for a variance from the provisions of the zoning ordinance 2011 as amended, section 7.2, as they apply to the premises known as 11th Street, map 102, lot 225A, PBDD. Petitioner seeks a variance to allow addition and needs relief to the right-side yard where 25 feet are required, 9.3 feet are proposed, and from the lot coverage where 35% is allowed and 36% is proposed. This property is located in a BN zoning district. The application and plot plan are available for review at the City Clerk and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall, and will be available at the time of public hearing.
Hello, Nate Terranzoni, 38 Proctor Circle, PBDD, Mass. What I've got is a two-unit commercial building in a BN zone on Lynn Street, 11 Lynn Street in PBDD. And by right in a BN zone, a two-unit residential is allowed, and so today I propose a 20 by 11 and a half foot, give or take, addition to better reconfigure the property as a two-unit residential, but am looking for relief on the right setback. I think I need the 25 feet, and proposed would only be 9.3 feet. Lot coverage required is 35% lot coverage, and I'm proposing 36. I luckily was able to speak with some of the immediate neighbors to the right, Faustino Mello, and to the left, Ms. Jacqueline McGowan. They gave me verbal AOKs that they didn't have a problem, and I have a signature from Mr. Fiore, who's one to the left of Ms. McGowan. So was able to speak with a few of the immediate neighbors, which was good, but yeah, that's, that's the proposal.
Through the chair. And do I understand this correctly, that it's a pre-existing nonconformity, you're not building any closer to the lot, lot line? Is that correct?
Correct. It'll actually be further from the lot line than the existing shed roof, a little overhang that, that is there now, so yes. You're welcome.
Motion to close? Motion to approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set.
Move the item one to, move the...
What do you want to do?
You can't.
Oh, you can't?
New business, though, right?
Oh, new business.
And I wanted to add to, so what Kevin was saying, I think that's a good point, and I also think that, Attorney Keltie, while you're here, I think it would be helpful in a situation like the one you had tonight with the Blaney Ave, if you provided the assessor's map that shows the square footage of all the parcels in relation to that parcel that you were trying to, you were applying, that your client was applying to subdivide? Because then I think it would have shown that the other parcels are equal to or less than. Yeah.
So once again, the more information given, the easier.
For a moment, the reason the surveyor engineer doesn't do it is cost of the plan. But we could do that with the assessors. But then also, we could do aerial, like you did, and sort of supplement the plan that's being filed by showing you an aerial.
If I could, through you to Attorney Keltie?
Yes.
In light of our instructions that were given by our chairperson tonight, as far as item one goes, there were a couple of things that would be presented. So if you were ready to present them, that's great, but please make sure that they get to us in good time for the next reading.
We should do them with the package from now on, when we're filing. Yes.
Thank you.
I understand.
So we'll take your thought in a minute, whatever that was, I can't remember. But what I heard this evening from these two gentlemen, and correct me if I'm wrong, because you're the only other one here, perhaps, would you rather have these mailed to you like we did before, so you have them ahead of time? It sounds like the online isn't working.
Well, I can't check it out.
I can see it, and I can go on a computer if I can, but I always, you know, I do most of it on the phone.
We have, we have a, 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 of the older generation.
So what do you think? I mean, you can oblige anybody, right?
Listen, I can, I can have the packets here. It was, it was more cost-effective for the packets to be mailed. I gave you that, and the four emails that I sent.
No, no, no. It's not...
So I gave you that option. So however you want me to do it, whatever's helpful for you guys, that'd be more than helpful to you. But as a, more of a cost-effective, the packages, sometimes they get, especially like when you have like the water management.
If I could...
Go ahead.
Would you please ask the city clerk if he could have the packages delivered at no cost for the mailing?
Sure, like, like, like you do for city council?
Please department drop the package.
If for some reason they have to be mailed, I would suggest that all applicants provide a reduced size of their plan. I don't think we need to have the big blueprints mailed to us, and I think that's probably what takes up a lot of the weight, is those thick blueprints, especially when we have a dozen. We, all we need is an eight-and-a-half-by-11 reduced plan, and they should all have to provide that. There's no reason why we can't make them provide that.
That is the issue, is the big blueprint. But with the new application, it says on...
So let's, so you want, you want yours delivered?
I, I always talk to...
Okay, yes. Barry, you want yours delivered? Yes. Do you want yours delivered?
Yeah, yeah. And Carla's been sending mine.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I don't know about the other people, so maybe you could make note that, send these three gentlemen their packets ahead of time. That's good. We want you to be happy. And it makes for a more... But it also makes for a more successful evening.
To accept, minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
Second. Good evening.